All right, Grace, go ahead.
Okay. Councilman Turinji.
President.
Councilwoman Rethnety.
President.
Councilwoman Riley.
President.
Councilwoman Friedman.
Present.
Councilman Burns.
President.
Councilman Strong.
President.
President Scanlon.
President.
All right, I knew Mayor David is first. Go ahead, Mayor.
All right, good afternoon, President Scanlon, members of City Council. Appreciate your time. I'm going to say that for those of you who are calling in remotely, I think we can hear you a little bit better than the folks who are on the second floor. So just if you're asking questions on the second floor, just please speak up a little bit so that we can hear. There's just a little bit of an audio discrepancy there. I'm joined to my right with the Vice President of Bowers Development. His name is Mike Licata. And as we've done with similar projects, wanted to come to City Council to give members an opportunity to ask some questions about the project, the developer. You've all, hopefully at this point, seen the news release that went out earlier today. Just to give a quick recap, it's an approximate $25 million project that involves the sale of both the Charles Street Business Park, which is owned by the Binghamton Local Development Corporation, and the Co-Generation Plant, which is owned by the City of Binghamton. All right, and so this project involves getting the power plant back online to be used to generate and provide redundant, low-cost electric to potential tenants of the power plant, excuse me, of the Charles Street Business Park. Involves the construction of approximately 150,000 to 250,000 square feet of whether it's office flex space, commercial space, distribution, warehouse space, et cetera. And I think from the city's standpoint, most importantly, it does a number of things. One is both of these assets or parcels are off the tax rolls right now, so it generates zero dollars for the City of Binghamton, the County of Broome, and the school district. So it's important to get these parcels back on the tax rolls. It leverages tens of millions of dollars in public and private investment into both assets. And of course, it creates good-paying jobs in the amount of approximately 200 construction jobs. And when the project is complete, partially 150 to 250 jobs with one or more tenants. Just to give a little bit of background, most of you know, I believe, that the city received, the Co-Generation Plant was actually a donation from the previous owner in 2017. It was something that myself and the previous council really had to move quickly on in order to accept this donation prior to the end of the calendar year of 2017. I think we had a special meeting a few days before December 31st at the direction of Wellhead as they closed out their year. And as you know, the BLDC, I'm sorry, the agency, the IDA, had owned the 21 acres of Charles Street for a long period of time. Charles Street had been vacant for almost two decades after Brandonburg Industrial Services demolished the former Anatech buildings. And the city was concerned about the lack of development when Charles Street was managed by the agency or the IDA. And the IDA has been a great partner to work with, worked with us on structuring a deal that was very affordable for the city to acquire this property and then pay the IDA back as we sold one or more acres. And so I just think that while we're dealing with the COVID-19 situation right now, public safety without question, and the safety of our community and residents and businesses is a top priority. But I think we also need to have an eye on our short-term and long-term economic future, right? And so it is important where possible that projects continue to move forward for the reasons that I outlined. And I know that one of the more attractive components of this project is that, you know, we've had people who've been interested in solely the power plant. We've had people that have been interested solely in the Charles Street Park. But this is a project that really combines those two. And I knew long ago that each asset had potential, and that if we could acquire them both or gain control over both of them, that would provide the city with a very unique and rare opportunity. This has been something, generally speaking, we've been working on for several years. As I indicated, we took the power plant in 2017, and then Charles Street shortly thereafter. We've been working with this developer, I think, since the beginning of last summer. So we're very pleased that we've been able to get to this point. And so with that, I will turn it over to Mike Licata, again, who is the Vice President of Bowers Development, who can talk, obviously, about the project in general and his vision for the site. But I thought might be helpful for maybe you to talk a little bit with council about your background and maybe some other projects that you and Bowers Development have been involved with as well.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you all. Very much appreciate your time. By way of background, some of the other projects that Mayor's referring to would include similar ones to what we envisioned for the park here. About a 56,000-square-foot plastic manufacturing facility in Canastota, New York. The site was a manufacturing site. It was contaminated. It had a rusted, hulking frame of a building that had been abandoned, dilapidated, and it was terrible eyesore. No one wanted to touch the property because of the fact that it had some contamination outside, PCBs and oil, petroleum spills. But our sister company is AECC, Asbestos Environmental Consulting Company, and we know how to deal with this type of challenge. So we don't get scared. Actually, we run towards contaminated properties. And one thing I'll say at the onset, when we go into a community, we prefer to do multiple projects. If there are projects that are troubled in your community that you're aware of, you'd like us to look at, those are the ones we would like to pursue. Now, I use that to segue into, in Utica, in addition to this project in Canastota, where Dutchland Plastics is now the tenant. They originally anticipated 50 to 70 jobs being created, and they're over 100. So they manufacture Yeti coolers and a number of other plastic products for Fortune 500 companies, some gas tanks for ATVs, et cetera. So the issue is, they're thriving at this location. And in the beginning, we designed an 11,000-square-foot addition into the primary planning stages, so that if they decided they wanted to expand, it was already pre-approved. The other projects that we're dealing with in Utica, we purchased a 250,000-square-foot derelict, former GE Radio Manufacturing Facility on Bleeker Avenue. It was two stories. And we saw this building, and it had been vacant for 14 years, and it, again, had been in disrepair and abandoned. And it was an eyesore, and it was a hazard to the community. So as we went through it, and of course, we see beautiful when we see those types of projects, we recognized its location was outstanding for distribution and logistics. But you can't do that kind of project on two stories. So we brought in an engineering firm and assessed that if we cut out the floor in between the beams, we would have a 30-foot clear-high building, about 86,000 square feet. Was that workable? And they determined that it is. So that's what we're doing. Instead of demolition on the entire site, we're removing a floor between two. So we take a pretty creative approach to projects we go into. And that project had 2.2 million from New York State in restore money and a $300,000 national grant. So we were able to leverage those funds in order to get this project underway. Two other projects of note, one is 120 Bleaker Street, also in Utica. The other is 253 Genesee Street around the corner, and that is called the New Century Club. Both projects were abandoned, both were derelict, both were scheduled for demolition, and both are historic preservation buildings. I could go on, and I won't bore all the council members, but 120 Bleaker Street is now home to a law firm, Legal Aid Society. Took the whole building, and we won an award last year for preserving an historic treasure. The New Century Building is the second-oldest women's club in the country. And it was ready to get, they were going to knock it down. And when Brian went through, he said, "We can't do this. This is an architectural treasure. We got to figure something out." And so the City of Utica was very helpful in applying for a number of different programs that defrayed the cost of renovation and cleanup. So that you know how bad it was, between the time that Brian signed the contract, Brian Bowers, who was I'm referring to as my partner, and he's the president of the company as well, with Bowers Development at AECC, the roof fell in from the top of the building to the basement between the time that he signed the contract and before we could close. And the mayor was certain we were going to walk away from the project after that. And Brian looked at it, he said, "Well, now we have an elevator shaft. We can get an elevator in a historic building." And the shipper allowed us to do that. So we take on some very challenging projects. We're not intimidated by them. And we've got a track record for pulling them back from the precipice of destruction into reworkable and productive reuse in the communities we go into. Now we'll talk about this project. Sorry. So when we came and we saw this location, and the fact that it had the energy facility next door, I'm originally from Buffalo, New York, and I know all about the New York Power Authority, the hydro power, and how powerful it is that they can provide low-cost power for manufacturing. So I had that kind of in the back of my mind, that if we have the ability to supply industry with low-cost power onsite, and it's secure, then it's going to be an attractive attribute to the site that is unique. I don't think there's another park in New York State that is applying this type of approach to industry. So to the folks that we brought down, our energy experts, they looked at the facility. We don't have any intention of running a power plant. We are going to source that to folks that really do know what they're doing. But we had two of those folks down, and they went through it, and they saw that it was in a very good condition. Kudos to the mayor and the maintenance staff, because a lot of folks would just turn off the heat and turn off the lights, and those buildings fall into disrepair very quickly. But this building, and except for some of the equipment that was removed, which has to be replaced, we're pretty excited about the project. So we're with the power plant. If we can provide that park next door with low-cost power, we can go after rich energy product, or use, high-energy use, but also good employment. Manufacturing is a energy-hungry industry, but manufacturing jobs are the best multiplier in economic development. I spent four years at the Buffalo Niagara Enterprise when I was in economic development a few years ago and learned a little bit about it. So you really do want to go after as many manufacturing jobs as possible. The rule of thumb is, for every job you create, another job self-creates within the community to support that job. But manufacturing is usually four jobs for every manufacturing job you create. So those are outstanding impacts for a community. What we saw in Canastota was exactly that. With all the manufactured, plastics manufacturing jobs they brought in, it is a huge anchor to that community, and the mayor's very happy about that. So we see the same thing happening here with regard to the advantage of having that power plant right next door. Was that? Yeah, pretty good. All right. Any questions that anybody has? By all means, feel free.
Questions or comments? Jump in there. Line, jump in there if you want to ask a question.
I have a question. And, yeah, I see part of this agreement, partner says that there's a one-year due diligence period is included. Tell me how that came about.
Can we tell you how that came about?
Yeah.
President Scanlon, is that what you said?
Yes.
Okay. So this may be a crude analogy, but it's very similar to if you buy a house, right? You don't start spending money on your appraisal or your home inspection, and you've got other contingencies like financing. And those don't typically come into place until you have a signed purchase agreement. And so this is something that protects both the city and the developer. So obviously, as part of the due diligence, there are some, whether it's environmentals or other steps that need to take place that can ensure that this project will be able to become a reality, both for the developer and the city. And so we have built in a 12-month due diligence. That doesn't mean that that project can't or won't start prior to that, and I'll ask Mike to touch on that. But just from a development standpoint, there's obviously, you know, things that are going to take time, whether it's the title insurance or the environmental. Like all projects that are multimillion-dollar projects, you know, we'll seek some state funds, whether it's a CFA or a URI, just as, you know, all the other developers in big-scale projects in the city and county have done. So there's, you know, a certain amount of time that that takes as well. But this was really a period of time that provided the developer to get a technical and environmental understanding of all aspects of the project, time to get the plant up and running as well to make sure that they have a very clear understanding of what their budget is supposed to be, how much money they're going to need to put in, securing that financing, and also getting the environmental approvals as well.
That's about as good as, you can explain it, the environmental, the financial. We also start marketing right away to potential tenants. We don't.
The interest, the interest.
All right. So even without an aggressive, aggressive marketing campaign, just throwing it out to some folks I know in National Brokerage, as well as some friends I have in distribution and logistics, they've asked for information, already sent me a survey, sent me, "Where is this? It's in this part of the state." And they like the reach that Binghamton has to larger markets like Philadelphia, Northern New Jersey, New York City, and the corridors east, west, and north and south here are really good for distribution of products. Now, COVID-19 has tapped the brakes on pretty much everybody. I was in Buffalo with a gentleman who wanted, we were thinking of building 100,000 square feet so that we could accommodate someone pretty quickly. He needed 300,000 square feet, but he also needed rail to the site. So he liked the site, liked the attributes of the region, and if we could find a way to get rail across the street, we probably have the park filled already. But it's not a huge aggressive campaign, and we've already had folks in food distribution, cold food storage, frozen food, all indicating we want more information. So we're very excited when you get that kind of response in your initial requests for inquiries of indications of interest from end users. So we feel good. If, to answer to the point of the one-year due diligence, should someone come across and say, "We're ready to start going now," we can accelerate things. The primary, the big thing that we really need to know of is the environmental condition. I mean, it used to be an industrial site over there. There had been some contamination. We have to verify that it's clear and clean and safe for any of the residents, any of the tenants that we place onsite. We've got to feel comfortable that it is exactly that, a cleaned-up site. And that does take some time.
All right, thank you. Other questions? Yes. I believe we're all set. I didn't see any other questions out there.
All right, thanks. Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
We appreciate it.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Tom?
I'm going to go to Ray Standish now.
Tom?
Sorry.
Where's the, yeah, Tom?
Sorry.
Tom?
Yes.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Forgive me. My video, and my audio was kind of cutting out there. I had a few questions I was worried if I could ask.
I believe they're gone, Gio. We can try to get them back, okay? The mayor and that guy have gone, but Chris, can you call up there? We'll try to get them back. Hang in there one second, all right? Oh, they're back now. All right, Gio, go ahead. They're back. Gio has a question for you.
Sorry about that. Sorry about that. My audio and video was cutting out there a little bit. Mike, you had spoken about residential power. What do you foresee as a potential possibility about residential power?
I don't recall saying anything about residential power, but redundant power. Redundant power is.
No, no. Yeah, no, you didn't say residential power. I'm asking you, in your opinion, is there a possibility that residential power might be able to be leveraged in a project of this nature?
Our approach on that site would not be, that residential wouldn't be what we consider to be the highest and best use of that site. We would think that, I mean, that's a lot of power. 48 megawatts is a lot of power. You don't need even close to that. If you build that entire area with condos, four stories high, packed them in as tight as you could, you wouldn't need anywhere near that amount of power. So it's not the best thing for the plant, and it wouldn't be the best thing for job creation for the community. And it's not the best, not, our opinion is not the best use for the site.
So, Councilman, I'll jump in there too, because, and I think, Mike, for your benefit too, one of the things that I have said probably since 2017, and I know that Councilman Storinji and probably others have thought this as well, is that when we originally took the title to the plant, one of the things that we did explore was the concept of municipal electric. And I myself have, you know, said I would have loved to have seen that in the very beginning. And we actually spent a great deal of time, brought in outside lawyers that specialize in energy and electrical distribution to take a look at what some of the regulation, state hurdles, distribution, et cetera, would be. And it was problematic from an infrastructure distribution standpoint, because you would have to use NICEG's infrastructure. And we had met with NICEG many points in time, and as you can expect, they were not supportive of that. And so you would have had to duplicate the infrastructure. The megawatts would not have supported citywide, but perhaps, you know, downtown, the first wards, there were some close access points that we looked at. But also, the state approvals that would have been necessary, and the governor's shift specifically with the Green New Deal and clean renewable energy made it essentially, I don't want to say impossible, but all but impossible for the city from a financial standpoint and a regulatory standpoint to accomplish that sort of goal. And at that point, that's when we began to shift more towards the economic development standpoint.
Okay. Sorry. Understood.
Do we foresee at the state level?
Hello? I'm sorry, your audio is cutting in and out, Councilman Storinji. I'm not sure what you just said.
Oh, no, my apologies. No, I said, "Do we believe that it may be possible that anything related to more alternative energy policies at the state level could inhibit this project in any way, shape, or form?"
At this point, we don't. We have been, you know, in contact with NICERTA and through NICERTA about this project, and specifically the hydroelectric project, and really even in the microgrid project. The shift in the state's policy has impacted the microgrid project, but the state is extremely enthusiastic about the hydroelectric component of the microgrid project as well. So we've made sure that all of our permits and, you know, regulatory filings that we need to do are in place. So we don't anticipate that primarily for the use of generating the low-cost electric to the tenant. I mean, that's encouraged. It's an asset in this particular scenario.
Right. Thank you. Mike, I, so I believe the mayor's press release had talked about $25 million in aggregate investment.
Roughly?
Around there, roughly. Is there any broad sense right now of what the breakdown of private versus public funding mechanisms is for that?
Not at this point. I mean, we'll be pursuing all the normal economic development incentives that could apply to this location. Don't know if the property would be able to be eligible to get the program, or what other, as the mayor had mentioned, CFA, URI, these will be pools of capital we'll pursue, and we'll take a look at it from there. But, yeah, it's a, it's a big lift. So, yeah, everybody doing help would be great.
Councilman, the only thing I would maybe add to that is that the state of New York has some very stringent requirements for the CFA and the URI. And right now, a CFA, which we believe this project is, in a positive way, too large to apply for. The CFA provides about 20%. So if the state of New York provides 20%, the private, it's designed to leverage in 80% private sector contribution. The URI, which is, for some of the other council members, the Upstate Revitalization Initiative, that's part of the $500 million allocation that the Southern Tier Region received a few years ago. So the URI is a larger pot of money for the 500 million. And then the CFA, the consolidated funding application, that's an annual allocation for smaller projects. So this would be URI-eligible. And the state has said technically they loosen those requirements a little bit, but we're not seeing anything over 30%. So I think it's fair to say that the state will only support through the URI somewhere between 20 and 30%. And what they're, and so I would, I'm going in at approximately 25%. That seems to be consistent, give or take, you know, a percentage point of what we've seen other large-scale projects entail.
One point I would like to add onto the mayor's comments, we're very unique when it comes to how we apply the funds to a project. And what I mean is, the project I cited in Canastota had a one, just under $1.7 million Restore New York grant in order to help defray the costs of the demolition of the existing structure, as well as the cleanup of the site. We applied that towards the fixed costs and the mortgage, and were able to deliver a lease rate to this tenant at about 70% of market value. We passed those savings to the tenant. So they're in there at a rate on a brand-new structure at about 70% of what it would have cost them to build it new. So not all the developers do that. They increase their margin, and they keep it at market rate. That's not our style. So for our purposes, though, and for the purposes of Binghamton, it makes that site incredibly competitive, price-wise. And our normal margins are maintained. We're okay. You know, we're doing just fine. And it's a positive impact on the community.
Councilman, the other point you made, which is a good one worth touching on, is if multiple state agencies get involved, that will compound. So the DEC Environmental Brownfield Cleanup Program, for example, referring to the project on the north side, we were able to get a Restore New York grant for the demolition. It was a million-plus dollars from the DEC, and then through Home and Community Renewal was the tax credit. So there is the potential to get additional money outside of the URI process, and the DEC is a great example of that wouldn't be included as part of the URI that would be on top of.
Last thing that I'll say, relative to projects in every community we go into, we seek first the trades folks in that community, concrete workers, electricians, farmers. The first place we look is that community. And it strengthens our relationship to the community, as well as the overall economic fabric. So that's how we approach it. Sometimes we can't find somebody who can take on a large scale, and we have to broaden the net. But just so that, you know, the first approach is to the.
You stole my next question, so I'm glad to hear that you hold that geographic, you know, preference for, you know, bidders as you go out.
We spread it out in ever-widening circles into everybody we need.
Right. I know you may not be able to speak specifically to, you know, Firm A or Business B, but can you speak a little more specifically to the type of tenants you may potentially envision in projects of this nature?
No problem. Anything that involves advanced manufacturing, anything that is cold, frozen, or heat is going to need a lot of energy. And a lot of these facilities, a lot of these facilities have a dense workforce, and that works great for everybody. And that's works great for everybody. So. Oh, yeah, I just found out. I didn't even know. We have, we're sitting on an aquifer over there. So uh, but. Ourner Brian is ecstatic, so yeah, he's like starting to run through a whole new cluster of industries that we hadn't considered. Uh, so anyway, um. Those are some of the places we've reached out to specifically and have had. Positive responses. I mean, we don't have a commitment yet. We don't have anybody saying, I absolutely have to be there. But we do have a number of folks saying, send me more information. This seems interesting. So again, if it's processing, food storage, food distribution, cold storage, frozen. Or advanced manufacturing, ceramics. They use a lot of power and uh they want to get their products to large end markets, which Binghamton is close to. So.
Gotcha.
I I couldn't give you.
No, that's, that's great. Thank you. Um, you spoke, you spoke to the project that you did in Canastota as well as the two in Utica. Um, earlier today, uh, as I was doing some research on Bowers, I went onto your guys' website. Um, and I clicked on the, I clicked on the. Hello?
I'm sorry, I was just saying, our our website needs work, so I'm glad you were able to find something, but go ahead.
Uh, oh, yeah, so I went to the projects tab and the page is literally empty. Yeah, so it was a little diff, it was a little difficult to, so I was wondering if you could talk about really quickly um.
What we had on, what we had on the page originally were the renderings, what the buildings were going to look like, and now we have photographs. And and right now is a good time for Brian's brother Kyle, who's going to be doing that for us, to actually get it done. So he's at home with his kids and, like all of us, doing the best we can with the, he's got files in the office and this. Our our website is uh woefully under marketed, but I'll get, we do have slip sheets on a lot of those. And council member, I can send those over if you like. So.
I appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Not a problem, not a problem at all. And uh, thanks for pointing that out, because I'm going to be. You know, having this conversation again with the rest of the guys, saying, see, you know, people want to have the website. Fully functional, so this is good.
Well, I appreciate it. I, I'm sorry if uh the audio or video was cutting out. Uh, thank you, Mike, and thank you, Mayor.
Our, our pleasure. Thank you. What, does something else say there? Oh, thanks for them. Okay?
I think we're all set again.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, President Scammo. Sorry about that.
Ray says the sign out sheet here for the RL. I guess we'll start with Gio. Would you like to sign this? Councilman Scorinchi, would you?
I'm sorry. Um, what I'm gonna do is I'll I'll send an email to the clerk's office at the end of the night, um, which ones I'll sign and which ones I won't sign out, if that's okay, President Scammo.
Okay, that's fine. All right, so we'll, that's fine, yeah, we'll do that, okay. All right.
Thank you.
Let's go to Ray's Danny, since he's sitting right there.
Yeah. Hi, Tom.
Ray, how are you?
Council. I have a. I have quite a few tonight. I have six tonight, so. Uh, the first one, RL twenty seventy-nine, that's an agreement with GHD for a. Uh, post-construction compliance monitoring program. This uh. This was the second testing round. It was done. Uh, before the construction at the plant, and now that that construction is. Uh, basically complete. This is to do stream testing at the CSOs. Now that the plant's done. This is a requirement of the DEC. And since GHD did the testing the first time. We thought that they should be the ones that assist us with it this time. And Johnson City has already um agreed. Uh, their, their. Uh, resolution has already been passed.
Okay. Questions or comments on this?
Thank you, Ray.
Yep, all right, Ray, let's go to twenty eighty, please.
Twenty eighty. That's a. Yeah, it's a resolution to allow the mayor to enter into agreement with uh Widdham. Planning and design uh for the twenty twenty landscape architecture term agreement. This is a one-year agreement with uh. Uh, two uh extensions if we. Uh, to do that.
Ray, what's this for? Can you explain a little more to me?
It's a certain, this is a cap to fifty thousand dollars for small projects that. So we don't have to go out and do an R, have to go out and do the RFQ and interview all the firms. It keeps one on on board. They don't get paid unless they do work, and then whichever department uses them. They have to come up with the money to pay them.
This is an annual deal you'd normally do?
Yep, this term agreement.
Other questions or comments on this? Okay, Ray, tell us about twenty eighty-one, please.
Twenty eighty-one, that's uh an agreement with the Broome Tyoga Stormwater Coalition for mapping services. This is in regards to the MS four system. The uh. City of Binghamton, Town of Estill, uh. Room County, a number of communities have uh grouped together and utilized the services of. Uh, the, of this coalition. It's uh inter-ministerial agreements. And so we, we file our MS four reports together as one document. And what this is, is a requirement now of DEC is that. All the uh MS four communities have to be mapped. And so this is to pay uh. The Broome Tyoga. Coalition is to pay. Southern, Southern Tier Eight, that's the Southern Tier Regional. Uh, Board, uh, to do that. They've agreed to do that uh. Mapping for the coalition.
Questions or comments on this? Okay, Ray, tell us about twenty. Eighty-two, please.
Eighty-two. This is uh. Uh, an annual uh. Dues, if you want to call it that. This is the annual fee that each uh community puts forth. Towards the uh. Regulation implementation. This pays for. Putting that book together and the meetings that are held. We do this annually. It it's gone up the last couple of years. Hopefully it'll stay the same now for a while.
Questions or comments on this? Okay, Ray, tell us about twenty seventy-one, please.
Seventy-one. This is an agreement with Barton and Judas. For the uh upgrades to uh recreation park. This is for uh upgrading the tennis courts and uh. Uh, locating a, a final uh. Spot for the temporary ice rink we put up, so.
So can you tell me more about the ice rink, what their, the plants are there? Or Jared, maybe jump in there?
Well.
Or can you hear me all right?
Yeah, the, the. As you know, uh, at Rec Park, there's a uh. A parking area off of Beethoven. And there is a uh, a ball field there. And between uh. The foul line of the ball field and the parking lot is an area that's not in use. And so we thought we'd put a. Uh, a pad in there, either concrete or blacktop, to put the ice rink on that can be used for. Other activities during the summer. Uh, when the ice rink is not in use. That's kind of preliminary, because it's still in the, you know, we haven't hired the firm yet, but that's kind of some ideas. One of the locations we're looking at.
As long as we're talking about that, I I I tend to go by the uh, one of the town of Convent at Sturbridge Park and. That's probably five times as big as the one that was a rec park, and I would recommend going to that size if you're gonna do something permanent there with a pad. Just because they'll give people a chance to use it, and I saw people out there all the time using that one.
Yeah, it will be bigger than the one we had.
I hope they, I hear the mayor say double, but I think it needs to be a lot bigger than double. That's my opinion.
Each of these sides are doubling, so like a sixty by one twenty is what we're targeting for the new rec park. Uh, which is about the size of a tennis court, uh, not inclusive of the line, so the the outside areas as well.
That, all right, good, good, yeah, good. All right. I have questions or comments on this?
So what is the estimated cost now of this additional? Because I know we talked about renovating the tennis courts, and that was already taken care of under a different RL. But now this new portion is being added for what I see, is it one hundred and thirty-five thousand? Is that correct?
This is to cover the design costs for uh developing the capital project, and the capital project will be funded. Uh, through the city's uh capital account it was bonded for. And then uh depending on the the final cost, it'll be a combination of that and maybe other funding sources.
So this wasn't in the original plan, though, with the revitalization of the tennis courts. This is something new.
No, this is the same project in order to, if you have a capital project for, say, five hundred thousand dollars. A part of the baked-in cost for that five hundred thousand dollar project is usually anywhere between ten and fifteen percent in soft costs. So this is to do the engineering, the design, to handle the actual implementation. Barton and Le Judas will create a plan for the tennis courts and rec uh park ice rink. They'll create the specs and then bid that out, and that will be the remainder of the cost uh of the project. So when we talk about a project being a million dollars or six hundred thousand dollars. Part of that project are the soft engineering costs associated with it. In this case, uh, it's with Barton and Le Judas.
Right. This is the first time I've heard, maybe it's just me, of the permanent ice rink.
This is in the state-of-the-city address as well.
Other questions or comments? Okay, Ray, tell us about twenty seventy-four, please.
Twenty seventy-four, that's a, also an agreement with Barton and Judas for engineering services. For the uh City Hall Fire Station. As most of you uh are aware, I hope that the existing floor in that fire station. Is uh. If we want to keep it a fire station, then we would have to replace that floor. And, and so uh, we uh want to look at turning that space into office and storage space. Which would require uh less repairs than replacing the whole thing. Because obviously, whatever we put there won't wear as much as a fire truck. So. We still will have to do uh some smaller repairs. That would have to be done in order to just do that work also. So this is to. Uh, have them go back into the design that they did and bring out the, the. Portions that need to be done just to uh make that floor serviceable for other uses than uh parking. And it would also involve uh closing up the area where the overhead doors are.
Questions or comments on this? Thank you, Ray.
Thank you.
Okay, Jared, let's uh go to you now and tell us about twenty seventy-seven, please.
Okay.
I'm gonna do that one.
Okay.
Chuck down there as well?
Chuck right here, yes.
The uh seventy-seven is, we're asking to void the last RL that we asked to do. Prove that you did to transfer fifty thousand dollars for uh the coronavirus expenses. Uh, since that time, uh, the federal government, FEMA, basically says that they will cover those expenses for us. At seventy-five percent, uh, the state would come in at twelve and a half percent. We'd only be obligated to cover. Uh, twelve and a half percent of that cost. So we're asking you to void that last uh RL. And issue another one for the fifty thousand that you approved, plus another seventy-five thousand, bringing it up to a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. Uh, out of that hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, uh, the city would be uh responsible for twelve and a half percent of that. Uh, we would get reimbursed for seventy-five percent of the FEMA money. Uh, that does not include anything related to. Labor or anything like that, or wages that people are working or not working, not getting paid. That's not what FEMA is covering. They're covering specific expenses that we incur to mitigate the spread of the virus. Examples uh like cleaning City Hall every day. We have ten thousand dollars that we expect to spend on that. Uh, we had to sanitize an office space here that cost us three thousand. Hopefully, we'll have some N ninety-five mask in tomorrow. That is thirty-nine thousand for the police and firemen to wear. Uh, other masks for DPWs, another five thousand. Altogether, so far, we can come up with a total of sixty-nine thousand eight hundred and forty dollars that we either have spent. Or plan on spending uh out of that hundred and twenty-five thousand. I could send you a list of the items that you guys are interested in it, uh, but I hit the larger items for you.
Questions or comments on this?
Yes, please clarify for me. So Permanent Ordinance twenty thirty-six does not align to RL twenty thirty-six, correct?
I believe you're to be correct.
Yeah, the permanent, so all of them have an RL number, an intro number and a permanent number, and they never like match up. So it's not the same as RL twenty dash thirty-six.
Okay, I just wanted to be certain. Thank you.
Councilman Burks, go ahead.
Yeah. Uh. Looking ahead. Okay, so we we're all listening to the same news and all have the same talking heads that we're watching, but. And we all know that some good news came in that maybe this thing is flattening and that the curve is going to start coming down. So possibly, at the end of this month, they're going to start loosening things up. I know that the president wants to loosen up. I'm not sure what the governor has planned, but. As it's coming down the other side. Virus is still just as dangerous as it was when it was going up. So. I'd, I'd like to make sure that that we, at at whatever time the governor, whoever says that. That we're now loosening it up, that we don't loosen up cleaning up City Hall every day, you know, that we keep doing that. And then when the park depart, when the Parks Department opened up, I got the idea when I was going through Wegmans and they, for years, I've been wiping off my cart. And they have those wipes right there, sanitizer cart. Where we could put next, next to, uh, you know, being a grandfather and taking my grandkids to the parks. It'd be nice if we had wipes next to all the swings and all that sort of stuff. I don't know what the cost of that would be. But where people could either wipe, they'd probably wipe it before you went on it, you know? Uh, but we should, you know, start looking really ahead about. You know, they say that also it's going to come back in in September. So I know we can't do it right now, but I think we should all be looking ahead. This thing still being just as dangerous to everybody as it is going up, as coming down as it is going up. And that's about it. Oh, and also the money that's coming from the government. Uh, in that uh two, two trillion thing, I know it's one point one, what is it? One point one million we got coming to us, and in, in what way it's coming, when do we think it's coming? And what do we think that money's going to be spent on? That's about it for me.
Well, the, the one point one million, I think that was additional CDBG funding, I believe that was.
Right, so how would we, so, what, how do we decide where that money goes?
Well, that, that would go through the regular CDBG process, but I mean. Chuck or Jared might be able to speak to this more specifically, but. I don't know if that money, that additional money allocated there would be. Potentially be able to be used for that, per, maybe it could be, I don't know.
We uh, we've been awarded the money, but we have not been given a timeframe about when the money can be spent. It will be different from the standard uh CDBG and ESG. Um, it was a one point one million as part of a CDBG and then roughly five hundred and seventy thousand. But uh, it's been, you know, enacted by Congress, signed by the president. HUD has said what the amounts are, but we still do not uh have a date that we can spend that at this time. But we're working on it with HUD. Um, it's, it's a process. Steve Carson has been with them uh almost every day.
Okay, and then uh just to, you know, everybody be thinking ahead about. How we can keep everybody safe in the city after this time of uh everybody staying home, you know?
Any other questions about twenty seventy-seven and twenty seventy-eight?
President Scanlon?
Yes.
Oh, go ahead.
No, wait, wait.
Yeah, oh, thank you, uh, Chuck, uh, do you have a total sum cost of what we have spent up until, what we spent up until now? I know you said that seventy thousand dollar number. Is that including everything we've spent up until this point?
No, that's everything that we spent plus what we anticipate to spend. Okay, at this point.
We're, okay.
That is, we know as of today, I went through talking to everybody, what do we need? So I could give you this up-to-date scenario right now. I could tell you that, uh, depending on how these masks go, it could be five or thirty thousand dollars tomorrow that we have to buy additional masks, I don't know.
Right, um, kudos to everyone involved on, on getting that grant, that's great. Um, do you feel, do you feel that the additional money, so the one twenty-five minus the eighty, do you feel that that's going to be enough in relation to anything COVID nineteen related? Uh, particularly for me, I'm thinking about things like PPE for police, fire, DPW parks, departments like that.
For all the councilmen, the mayor does not want to go out there with a large number and say, give me a quarter million dollars. He wants to come down here, right, at every meeting and keep everybody informed of where we stand and what we anticipate the additional funding we will need if any. Okay, so that we're not going to come out with one big chunk. We'll, at each meeting, come and ask for more if you think we do, or to bring you up to speed of what we spend on.
Right, no, and, and that's a great process, I appreciate that, but just what? Do you feel with what's been spent so far that police, fire, first responders, DPW parks, they've got what they need?
Yes.
From what they're telling you they need? Okay, great, great, thank you.
Other questions or comments? Thank you, Chuck. Are you gonna do, you gonna handle Charlie Pierce's?
Uh, I'll handle Charlie's, uh, I think it'll be fairly quick, is, uh, this is, when we do the budget, we, we estimate what the bond numbers are going to be and what the band numbers are going to be and what the local system cost will be in the final bills. Uh, this should be the last one that we need, I think it was a hundred and eighty-seven thousand. Is that what this RL is for? I don't have it here in front of me.
I think it was that much.
I think it's for a hundred and eighty-seven thousand or something like that. It was, uh, needs to be added to their interest payments, or into their principal payments and taken from the local system cost that one is over, one is under. So that's what this is doing, just moving the money between the two accounts.
Questions or comments on this? Thanks, Chuck.
What, sorry, I have a question?
Sure, Aviva, go ahead.
Um, thank you. Uh, unless I'm looking at the wrong legislation, where, where does that a hundred and eighty-seven thousand come in? I'm seeing twenty-nine thousand.
That's what I see too, actually.
Okay, well, let me rephrase this one. The twenty-nine thousand, Aviva, is what the old one was? There is another hundred and eighty-seven thousand that I found on Friday that needs to come through here. Okay, I guess we would bring it the next, uh, legislative hearing. I thought that was part of this one. Okay, so sorry about that.
That's okay, so by come through, you mean be transferred from that one budget line to the other one?
Yes, yes, there's another.
Okay.
Exact number, but.
And that's, got it, and that's in addition to this twenty-nine thousand dollars, but that will be approved at a different meeting?
Correct.
Got it, okay, thank you.
Other questions or comments on it? All right, Chuck, you gotta go on to your stuff now, twenty seventy-three, please.
Seventy-three and seventy-five are going to be done by Ron Lake. Ron, are you still here?
I'm here, but I don't know which is which.
Seventy-three is the, uh, change order number three for ninety-eight thousand five seventy-three for Kester.
Okay. Do you want me to go through that item by item, or do you want to ask specific questions? Because there's like twelve items there.
Ron, why don't you just tell us about what it is and then we'll go from there?
Okay. It's, it's work that was required in order to get the plant operational. A lot of it was left all the, off the drawings, so we had to go ahead and, and get it done and we weren't getting much cooperation from one of the contractors, so we basically used Kester to do a lot of this work, which we would have normally added to another contract. But it's work that had to be done and a lot of it just wasn't shown on the drawings. Some of it was crack repair when, in the digesters. We didn't know about that until, until we tested them and, so then we had to, we had to grow them and we had to inject them to, to stop the leaking. And like the first one were some, uh, VFDs were, or variable frequency drives, or we call them variable speed drives. They were there, they were from the old plant, they were to reuse. Nobody checked them, so when it came time to use them, we found out they weren't any good. So we had to send them out and get them rebuilt and do a few other things to them, to get them operational. So there's, you know, a few more things like that.
So, worry, this is all unforeseen things, basically you're saying? Things we didn't know about?
Yes.
Questions or comments on this? Okay, Ron, Chuck, twenty seventy-five, please.
Ron, the next one is the GHD loan, the seventy-five thousand, one that we've been negotiating for a while.
Okay. We need, GHD is claiming to be about out of money on their contract. And I need them to be available because they're responsible to, to watch the testing and witness it. And they're also responsible to, if there's any design questions that still come up or things that need to be, uh, reworked and weren't known or shown on the drawings. So I need to have them around a little bit more than they were intending to be to make sure we get the project that we want. So we've been negotiating with, with GHD and we did get them, we did compound, but I do need them to be there when necessary.
Questions or comments on this? Thank you, Ron.
Okay.
Jared on the twenty sixty-nine, please. And twenty seventy.
Okay. First RL is to authorize the BLDC emergency loan program, uh, for impacted businesses, uh, in the city of Binghamton. Uh, this was announced a few weeks back, um, for fifty employee businesses or less. Um, the city is offering, um, interest-free loans of up to twelve thousand dollars for a twelve-month period. And then at that point, if the loan is not repaid, it would be essentially refinanced at the, uh, standard BLDC interest rates. This is, uh, in place to, um, assist, uh, businesses that have been negatively impacted by the COVID nineteen pandemic. It's modeled after a similar program in Syracuse. Uh, we've received a lot of, um, interest in it thus far from a variety of different businesses. Um, and this is, uh, quick action the city can take to get capital back into the market locally and also loans that are, uh, low interest, excuse me, no interest and low enough amounts that it, uh, it makes it advantageous for businesses to take advantage of.
So this is an interest-free loan for twelve months, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, and, uh, how many companies would you say have taken advantage of this, requested this, the city? How, how many companies have yet up in?
Um, I, I, let me look up here, um, we've had about twenty inquiries, um, and then as of, uh, early last week, four applications, I think that has gone up a little bit. We've had restaurant, medical, manufacturing, finance, retail, uh, fitness. Um, and in addition, the Broom County IDA agency is also pushing this application out, uh, to their contacts. So we expect a lot more, uh, in the coming days and weeks.
How much money do we have in there to cover this?
Three hundred and fifty thousand.
Okay, I don't, I didn't hear that, thank you. Other questions or comments on this? That's a great program, I'm happy to hear that, it's good.
And, uh, we, we are requesting that it gets expedited to get the money out the door as quickly as possible.
Okay, questions or comments? All right, tell us about twenty seventy, please.
This is a resolution, uh, to enter into an agreement with, um, uh, First Ward Action Council, um, for use of fiscal year forty-five home cho do funding. They're partnering with the Broom County Land Bank, uh, who has about eight hundred thousand dollars in renovation projects happening in the next, uh, twelve to eighteen months. And in the city of Binghamton, they're targeting three King Ave, thirty-two Hayes, and seventy-six Park Ave. This hundred thousand dollars in federal funding from the city will, uh, help leverage that money, which has already been awarded by the Office of Attorney General. And this is a commitment that the city made, uh, to make a competitive application. Uh, cho do funding or community housing development organization funding can only be used by certain nonprofits. The First Ward Action Council is one of them, and they're partnering with the land bank as they did on the, uh, Crandall Street Revitalization Project and Front Street Gateway Homes Project.
Questions or comments on this? Thank you, Jared. Hey, Lee, will you get twenty seventy-two, please?
Yes. Hello, so, we received one offer purchase for one twenty-five Conklin Ave. It's actually in a abandoned parking lot, uh, for the Park Diner, which is right next door.
Is this the old Crowley's lot?
It's, it's a piece of it, it's basically a lot right between the Crowley building and Park Diner.
Okay. Questions or comments on this? Thank you, Lee.
All right, thank you.
Ari, before you move forward, is, has this property been assessed for current market rate? Is it, is it listed for sale?
I don't believe it is, it's, uh, it's currently owned by the city of Binghamton, but it, um, uh, eleven thousand dollars, our assessor didn't seem to have any issue with that. That's the offering price.
You said the assessor said eleven thousand?
Uh, the assessor did not object to the eleven thousand dollar op.
Other questions or comments on this? Thank you, Lee.
Thank you.
Talk about RL, this is, uh, I think the first one is, um,
Eighty-three?
Yeah. Councilman Freeman, twenty eighty-three is yours, correct?
Yes, it is.
Can you talk a little bit about that for us, please?
Yeah, um, this is a resolution that says a lot of the same things that the, um, the governor is currently doing right now with the, um, the eviction and foreclosure moratorium. But it does extend it beyond, um, thirty days after the ninety-day moratorium to give people more of an opportunity to catch up, because it's not a rent freeze. And if people are out of work during the state of emergency and they owe back rent, this allows them more time to catch up on that. Um, it also, um, puts a moratorium on foreclosure as well to give landlords a little bit of support, because I know a lot has been talked about giving tenant support who are renting, but, uh, you know, then, uh, small landlords are saying, well, if we don't get rent, then, you know, I can't pay my bills, et cetera. Um, and the reason why this is so important right now is because, as we all know, sheltering in place and staying home is so critical to mitigating the effects of COVID nineteen. So I think this is, uh, you know, it's extremely important now more than ever. I mean, this is important at all times, but now more than ever to make sure that we house everyone in our city and make sure that no one is kicked out and on the street when, um, you know, the biggest tool we have to stop the spread of COVID nineteen right now is for people to stay home.
Okay, comments?
Do we have the authority to do that?
Matt, that's a question for you.
So I ran the, oh.
There's, there are some potential, uh, jurisdictional, uh, issues here. Um, strictly speaking, the city of Binghamton does not have jurisdiction over, uh, either Binghamton City Court or, uh, the county court, or state supreme court as it relates to evictions or, uh, foreclosures. So, um, I mean, the short answer to that is, uh, no, we don't have any, any jurisdiction over the courts as far as what they do, uh, with regard to eviction or, uh, foreclosure. Uh, now, with that said, you know, if, uh, we had a situation where, um, the, the court was not abiding by, uh, the, the executive order issued by the governor, the city may have some legal standing to, to proceed with some sort of legal action against, uh, you know, against the court. But that, I mean, that's a, a completely different sort of situation than what we're talking about. Um, so, yeah, I, the other issue would be, um, actually enforcing, uh, warrants of eviction um, as far as, uh, you know, the sheriff's department. So the sheriff's department, the county sheriff's department is who, um, who enforces warrants of evictions when it, when it comes to evictions and foreclosures. And so that's the county, um, it's not Binghamton Police. Um, and so that's not really our jurisdiction either. So those, those are really the short answers to that. Um, you know, we, we are looking into this, uh, you know, as, as Aviva, I'm sure, you know, you can jump in here as well, I know you've spoken with Sharon. Sharon and I have spoken over the last couple of days, we're, we're trying to figure out, you know, what anything can do um, as, as far as these things go, but, um, there are jurisdictional issues and, uh, potentially, um, you know, we don't want to, uh, we do want to make sure that we are abiding by, uh, the executive orders that the governor, that the governor has issued, uh, so, um, Aviva, if you want to jump back in here and, and, uh, continue to explain, uh, what you were going to say.
Aviva?
You were cutting out a little bit at the end, can you repeat the last few sentences of what you said?
Uh, we just want to make sure that we're, we're in compliance with, um, state law and, and the governor's executive orders. I know your, your particular proposed legislation, um, simply extends, uh, the governor's executive order. Um, but I think, you know, one of the things that, that we're concerned about in corp counsel is, um, you know, that, the governor's executive order may be extended and may be renewed, it may change, so, um, we just need to make sure, I mean, that, it's, it's a hypothetical, but we just need to make sure that we're, we're abiding by, uh, those orders.
Uh, and I'm also, of course, open to, you know, tweak the, the language, you know? I, I want to resolve any jurisdictional issues, of course, um, but at the very least, I would want this to be, um, a jumping off point so we can talk about how we can house people in the community in this state of emergency, but also sustainably in the future. So if the language has to be changed, uh, you know, we, of course, should, should do that, you know? If it, um, you know, if we don't want to sign it out right now and maybe change the language and then bring it up at the next meeting, that's also okay with me.
Sure, that, I think that would be fine, and, and, and to your point, uh, councilwoman, um, yeah, I think this, this is a good starting off point, just to, to figure out, you know, as a body council, uh, you know, what, what do you want to do, where, where are you seeing the gaps between what the state is doing, what the federal government's doing, what, you know, the county is doing, you know, Department of Social Services, what, uh, local nonprofits are doing. Um, so, you know, I would encourage council to, to, you know, pick up the phone and call people, email people, um, talk to talk to the planning department, talk to, you know, building and construction, be in contact with Jared and Megan and the mayor's office, you know, Metro Interfaith, Coordinated Care Services, Catholic Charities. These are all local organizations who, you know, they're doing work right now. And, you know, I think they would, they would love to hear from you.
Councilwoman Freeman, why don't you continue to work with Corporation Counsel on this, please?
Absolutely.
Yeah, sure.
Yeah, hi. No, I think it's obviously something that's very important, not just for now and what's happening, but this is a conversation we ought to be having at all times because we strongly want to serve those who are vulnerable. But, you know, this is, I think this has brought up a lot of questions, not just for me, definitely not just for me, but folks out in the community. And, you know, and these are just, you know, things I'm throwing out there as I'm hearing certain, you know, concerns. For example, do landlords have the right to evict at this point? And this is kind of separate from what you were saying and proposing, Aviva, just, these are just questions. Do landlords have the right to evict tenants for non-rent or payment issues at this point? For example, if there's destruction, if there's disobedience, if there are safety issues. And if landlords do not have that right and, God forbid, something goes wrong, I mean, who's held accountable? Are we as a city held accountable for those sort of issues that would come up? In addition to that, you know, other things I'm hearing and I'm thinking about is this impacts landlords to a huge extent. And we're not, I mean, across the board. And so we want to make sure if we're helping folks, you know, tenants, those that need housing, we're also looking at the other end, and we're not penalizing the little guy, maybe somebody who has one unit, two families, so forth, and depends on that paycheck to pay for, you know, depends for that, on their rent to come in to feed their family and to also pay insurance that they have to pay on their property, right? Their taxes, their mortgage, and all of those sort of things that, you know, we're not being equally vocal about if we're going to talk about equity and how it's impacting everybody. So I'm all for, absolutely, Aviva, I think we need to be having these conversations, but I also want to make sure that we're not in an attempt to help folks, we're not not being fair to others. I know a lot of families who have, you know, who live in a two-family sort of a house, and they are struggling and they're very concerned about how they're going to make ends meet now that they will most likely not be getting in their rent check. So, yeah, I guess, I just, those are just some of the things that I want us to be talking about. Thank you.
Yeah, those are some good points. My understanding is that the only way at the moment that someone can be evicted is if there are immediate safety issues, structural issues or something like that. But at the moment, I think, besides any non-emergent reason for ninety days, starting from March twentieth, so March twentieth through June nineteenth, my understanding is that someone cannot be evicted unless it's an emergency.
So just structural issues? And I mean, and I, it's really a question I don't know anything about. Really, what about a behavior that's hazardous? What about breaking certain rules of, you know, the unit they're living in or whatever, the building they're living in? I guess, I don't know if anybody has those answers, but I would just be very concerned. You know, folks ought to not be behaving badly and in a way, in a way that puts others in danger and then say, wait, hey, you can't evict me. So, I don't know, again, things that we didn't necessarily have to think about, not to only go about, we ought to be thinking about is we don't really know how they're going to impact us. And who's liable when those sort of things happen? Yeah, thanks.
Other questions or comments on this?
Yeah, President Scanlon, I'll just jump in real quick. I will just say that I believe that if it is an emergency situation, the, you know, a landlord or a tenant could petition the court if there's an issue involving, you know, if there's a landlord-tenant issue. So we don't really have the answer to that question. But the courts, the courts are dealing with it. So if they deem it to be an emergency, you can, they will allow you to file an emergency petition. The other thing I just wanted to mention that I forgot, which is actually pretty important here, is Executive Order two oh two point five. So that executive order, I believe that was issued March twentieth, states that notwithstanding executive law section twenty-four, and if you remember, that's the section of law which gives local chief executives the emergency powers in the state of an emergency. So notwithstanding that provision of law, no locality or political subdivision are allowed to issue any local emergency orders in response to COVID- nineteen without the approval of the State Department of Health. So it's just something to be aware of that any emergency order that's issued would need state approval. We don't really know what, what sort of things they're looking for, what that would require. We're not really sure if any local legislative bodies have actually done this yet. Certainly, we've seen, we've seen mayors all over the state, you know, issue their executive orders pursuant to executive law twenty-four. But this is just something that, if this is an area that you want to pursue, that council as a body wants to pursue these types of pieces of legislation, just be aware that it is probably going to require state approval.
Can you cite that reference again?
Yep, there was Executive Order two oh two point five. It's down towards the bottom, and that was issued March twentieth, I believe. So it takes one of the last bullet points down, down towards the bottom. I think I've actually got it. Yeah, it's like, it's like the very last bullet point in that executive order.
Thank you, Matt. Councilwoman Riley, are you all set? We have more to discuss on this?
Yes, I'm ready. So everyone has been talking about COVID. We did make policy amendments to address the need of our city, not only in the building itself, but relating to funding that we will receive from federal, federal support. As you know, we're in a crisis, and the crisis does not limit itself to those that have housing. We shut the parks as well as the open restrooms and water sources where cleanliness, which is one part of evading or reducing the virus load in effect. So our unhoused population cannot maintain certain things that they may have found support for in the past. As you know, we current, Binghamton City used to have four shelters for our unhoused. The YWCA is no longer accepting clients since the COVID outbreak. BOA and YMCA are accepting patients. But as you know, if we are to follow the guidance and the ordinances, social distancing and spacing, providing space to those residents has reduced the number of vacancies and placements for the population. Additionally, as we talked about in the building for the city, we know that increased sanitation to not only provide safeguards for the homeless population as well as the employees have to be increased to match what is requested or authorized by the CDC. So there have been a number of costs and a number of issues regarding the safeguarding of our homeless and unhoused population. Now, the YWCA has moved to one resident per room, which, again, reduces some of the availability while also saving a room for those that have been quarantined, which, as you know, until you're approved for a test, some patients are given the quarantine ordinance, okay? So once you're quarantined, that's fourteen days, you need to be protected from the general population. Cold blue, which fortunately we haven't had, if you don't remember, is when the temperature drops below thirty-two degrees, which requires that we, again, provide stronger support for our unhoused population. The BOA only has two single rooms left. So again, we've not reached the plateau on this curve, as you know. And New York City will hit the plateau first. Binghamton, as an upstate city, is targeted to hit the plateau a little later on. Right now, we have twenty unhoused people in our city. Our social service agencies that have been supporting these people, our neighbors, have been stressed because, again, some of them are unable to receive the emergency assistance from DSS, and they have utilized those funds, again, to make sure that sanitation is upheld and that extra employees are employed to maintain those safeguards. So this piece you have in front of you, you know, I sent several drafts. I think you might have received the wrong draft. However, the ask is that we, as a council, utilize some of the funds to support housing our residents properly by supporting either the cost of emergency shelter at hotels that support housing and shelters and/or providing extra funding outside of the typical CDBG cycle to our social service partners. Because, again, the funds that are typically expended have been utilized, and there's a greater need.
Comments?
Um. Couple of just points, questions. I'm just wondering, like, how many unoccupied units or buildings do we have in the city of Binghamton that would actually do something like this that are, I guess, is one of the questions that I have. And I guess maybe I just need to look into it a little more. Councilwoman Riley, it's, you know, what happens when COVID- nineteen is over or the curve flattens? Is this something that you're talking about for like a specific period of time? Is it ongoing? What are you thinking about that?
So both of those questions are part of the legislation that I submitted. So right now, the urgency is, well, first of all, we are in need of supporting and assisting with our underhoused or unhoused population across the board. However, this current need in terms of the virus and the spread and the mitigation of the virus presses us to kind of push that a little bit faster. So if you were to ask me, I would make it a priority ongoing. But of course, that's a different legislation. I did add the properties that the city of Binghamton House holds in this legislation for discussion as it relates, as it mentions, further discussion. But the priority, again, is housing the unhoused with support by either the hotels and support of the agencies that are trained and accustomed to handling these on a day-to-day basis. And again, I apologize. I think you received a copy of a draft. So I sent several copies. So, but the basis of the legislation is still the same that we need to move to support. And right now, today, we have twenty residents that are unhoused and are not eligible for the emergency DSS funding and do not have rooms because we are safeguarding. Now, on a typical day, we may not need single spaces and isolation rooms. So that would be different. But we know now, again, we're under a crisis and we need to support what's happening now.
Jared, you had a comment? You said, there to say something?
You say, me?
Yes.
Okay. The question I had for Councilwoman Riley is, I know the version we got that says like city of X. And was this a, was this a form resolution from a nonprofit agency, like a national organization or something?
This was from one of my friends in another city, but I was not going with corporate counsel to assist me with drafting. But this was not the final draft.
Okay, what city was it? Have they adopted this resolution?
But it has substantive changes. So this was their first as well. So I've been working with not only, well, I've worked with several, trying to get the right language for our city. Again, talking with the YW and BOA, just trying to, again, address what's happening now.
What, was it a, was it a New York State city that you, that this is modeled after?
I'm not sure if that, how does that relate? Because, again, we're trying to fit it to Binghamton, which is, again.
Well, for example, like with the BLDC program that we announced, we modeled it after Syracuse. So they had additional details. What I'm asking is, if we want to look into how this actually works in practice, the question is, if this is modeled after another city's legislation, what's the program or what's the city that have voted on and adopted it?
My notes, and I can definitely tell you, because, again, I pulled it from various cities and various constituents that have something similar that they've put in place recently.
Other comments, questions? Councilwoman Burns?
Yeah, the block grant money that's coming from the federal government, certainly some of that could be used for what you're talking about. Sure, you know, when I saw that we were getting the money, first thing that goes through my mind is, oh, yeah, I've got some ideas. And I'm sure that everybody in the government, the city government, has the ideas, including mayor or assistant mayor. So I think it's important that all of us put forward whatever ideas we have for that money before the money is gone, goes bye-bye.
Other questions or comments? So, Councilwoman Riley, what, I guess my question for you is, are we going to wait for you to get the final version done with Corporation Counsel? Do we, we need to see the final version, I guess. But I'm not opposed to this, believe me. I just need to figure out where we're going with it.
I think we sent several iterations. I don't know how this one got attached, but that's okay. Do you want me to email it tonight?
I'm sorry? Say it again, please?
I can send that out.
Yeah, I'd like to, so we can all see it. I think it'd be a great thing to keep this moving. Again, I'm not opposed to it by any means. We need to see the final version to see what we're going to talk about, you know? And there's a lot to implement. There's no doubt about it. It's not, you know, it doesn't happen overnight. I'd like, I know you like to happen overnight, but it's, I'm not going to be that quick to implement this. So if we get that out to everybody tonight and we can see the final version and then we can comment directly to you about that or communicate amongst us.
I think Gio's got a question.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. President. Forgive me again, the video and the audio was kind of cutting out. I think when Jared was talking with Councilwoman Riley. But and I think you had said something about draft. I'm really confused. What is city of X, New York State Senator X, New York State Assembly Member X? What is that?
Again, I shared that. I sent an initial draft that I was working with corporate counsel just to see if some of this verbiage fit. My final version doesn't look like that. So I'm not sure what this is where we started. And we were, I wanted, again, sound data to make it as robust as possible, again, to meet the needs of our unhoused, particularly now that the access to water and other things are, and public bathrooms are now limited.
Right. The only, I will be honest, kind of extending something that Councilwoman Resonetti brought up a little earlier. So, for example, if you look so for example, if you look at the first be it further resolved from the top of the page going down. It says if additional housing is required, all unoccupied units within commercial license, commercially licensed establishments. I'm assuming you're talking about city of Binghamton owned properties. Um, are they even legally livable from a code perspective? Because I know that a number of the properties that, um, we've taken in, into the city of Binghamton over the years, whether they've been commercial or residential, are usually the result of, um, a potential demolition that may come around due to the fact that costs associated with making those properties habitable, uh, overwhelmingly exceeds the demolition cost of the property. Um, so from that perspective, we would end up in a situation of not even needing an up-to-date database of all properties in the city of Binghamton owned of this type, but what are the actual labor and code costs related to ensuring that they're, um, you know, that they're up to date? And I, I would imagine that is not a low cost.
Right. And so that again, was part of the discussion that is long-range planning. And I believe prioritize in the, in the, of, of course, you can't see my final version, but I prioritized it with support of the agencies first, support of the, um, housing in terms of emergency, uh, hotel use as second. And then the 30-day discussion where we will outline and prioritize utilizing our partners in these agencies. So again, you, you don't have the final draft and I apologize because again, I sent several, um, but somehow this one ended up in your version.
Got it. Thank you.
Councilwoman Riley, have you, uh, thought where this money is going to come from to pay for this?
The CDBG funding right now until we are properly able to again, receive the support from the federal agency. So we can start with some of the money we have and in, um, and I don't have the actual budget line. And it possibly can come from H1210 that we took recently, uh, replenished. If we wanted to, uh, start. However, again, we know we will be receiving additional funds and we can replenish that line based upon, again, meeting the needs of the, um, unhoused the agencies we will be working with to meet that need.
All right. Thank you. Other questions or comments? So, um, everybody read the pending legislation. If there's anything anybody wants to discuss, we can discuss it now. There's four or five items on there. The pending legislation, at least when we're tooling.
I had a, a question on the pending legislation.
Yes.
Um, I don't, can you see me? But this is a random question. I don't know if you can see me when I'm talking, but.
We cannot see you, no.
Oh, okay. Sorry. Um, I was for RL 20 dash 49, did we say that we wanted to have a public hearing for that? The, um, the sale of the Elizabeth Street and the Oak Street properties? And if so, did i- is that happening? What, when is that happening?
Yeah, so the public hearing is scheduled tomorrow night.
Tomorrow. Okay. Thank you.
Our business meeting is tomorrow night.
There's a holiday this week, so this meeting is tomorrow. Good Fri- good Friday is Friday. That's right.
It's the first day of Passover on Wednesday. So yes, some of us will be eating a lot of matzah instead of passing legislation.
Yes.
So we'll, that will be tomorrow. Um, how are they going to, they're going to call in? I mean, how's it going to work?
Uh, they can either call in or email the clerk, uh, clerk@cityofbington.com.
So that was, that was transmitted to them when you, the notice went out for the public hearing?
Correct.
Okay.
The directions are in the public notes and also on the website calendar for the entry for tomorrow's meeting.
Good. Okay. All right. Good.
And I believe, I believe they had a, a public hearing for something, uh, the ZBA meeting, uh, earlier this evening. And I believe that's exactly what they did. So, um, Sharon, I believe Sharon will be at the business meeting tomorrow. So she'll, she'll be familiar with the process.
All right. Good. Good. Other questions on pending legislation? Hearing none. We'll see everybody tomorrow night and I'll take a motion.
What are the logistics on signing? Do you want us to email Grace and Lee for these? I just want to make sure we're all doing the same.
Yes. Before I leave tonight, I'll send out a quick email reminder, just, uh, asking everyone to let me know which pieces.
Just list them, all the RL numbers and.
Yeah.
So we can get it on the legislation for tomorrow.
At least do we physically need to sign those?
Not necessarily. It's good practice to sign them, but.
I could say yes on all of them and that's signed, right?
Right. I mean, logistically, really, anyway, you guys want to let me know that you're sponsoring legislation, it's fine.
Okay. Everybody's got that, right?
Yeah, as long as it's done before the start of the business meeting, I think that's the only okay, only issue.
I'll take a motion to adjourn.